Okay, are we ready? Everyone all set? Mm-hmm. Good evening. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Newburyport Public Schools School Committee for Monday, October 7th, 2013. Mrs. Kennedy, would you kindly call the roll?
Mr. Mannan?
Present.
Mr. Cole?
Here.
Ms. Sweeney?
Present.
Mayor Holliday?
Present.
Mr. DeCantor?
Present.
Mr. Pousset?
Here.
Mr. Keown?
Thank you. Please stand to say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The mission statement of the Newburyport Public Schools: The Newburyport Public Schools prepares students to live successfully and meaningfully in the community and the world. We teach them to collaborate, to think creatively and critically, and to communicate effectively. Our schools are safe and inclusive settings, academically rigorous with high standards for comprehensive curricula, and high expectations for student and staff behavior, growth, and performance. We actively promote the health and wellness of all our students; we engage the entire community in the education process.
Thank you, Mayor Holliday. I want to remind committee members to make sure that your phones are turned off, please. Do we have a consent agenda this evening, Mr. Keown?
Yes, we do.
Could you please advise?
We have warrants. I move that the following name bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate to $20,333.34 be approved and forwarded to the city auditorium for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Warrant, motion carries.
Again, I move that the following name bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate to $501,811.44 be approved and forwarded to the city auditorium for payment. There is a conflict with the mayor.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Present.
Motion carries? More?
That's it.
I'd like to now turn your attention to the school committee minutes for Monday, September 16th. There is a typo at the top. It was not a public hearing; it was a regular school committee meeting, so we will make that correction in our minutes. Could I hear a motion?
Remove the approval of the minutes of our meeting of September, what was it?
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth. Thank you.
Second. 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 All those in favor? Or discussion? Corrections? Reading? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? We have now reached our first section of public comment. This is the time when community members in the audience can come up and join us at the table. Please state your name and your address, and try to keep your comment to about two minutes. Do I, is there?
Bring your own chair.
Oh.
Okay, good.
Or Julia, we could move you up for a minute, let public comments people sit there. Is there any public comment at this time? Hearing none will move forward. Our student representative from the high school is Julia Bradley. Could you update us on the happenings at the high school, Julia?
So, first on the list is our Student Advisory Council's Club Fair. Last week was a really big success. There was about 24 clubs total represented, and a lot of different clubs had people sign up to join, which is awesome. In October this month is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and the senior class is holding a fundraiser for maintenance strides, and they're selling t-shirts and pink shoelaces, and they've made a lot of money for the charities so far. And the senior class is also hosting a dance this Saturday that they're calling "De-Hype", and I'm not really sure what it's about, but a lot of people say they're going, and it sounds really fun. There's no school on Monday for Columbus Day, and that's also the day the German exchange students are coming to NHS. And then the 19th, there's PSATs, and that's it, so thank you, excuse myself.
How long are the German students here for, Julia? Do you know?
Two or three weeks.
I have the schedule here. They arrive on Tuesday, the 15th, and they leave on Wednesday, the 30th. So they're here for 15 days.
Oh, nice. Thank you.
Just in the meeting for that.
Before you leave, Julia?
Yes.
I just would like to commend the students who were at the NEF event to raise money for the middle school auditorium for the sound and curtain and lights. And we had three groups of students who came and performed. They did the jazz band from the middle school. We had some of the students from the drama club who performed a few songs, and then, of course, our just amazing poetry slam. If you're going to be reaching out to community members, asking them to support the arts, what a better way than to actually see the amazing talent of our students. It was a wonderful event, and I think that whenever possible, we should always try and integrate the amazing talent of our students into these kinds of events, so it was a really nice event, so. Thank you to all the students who participated. Thanks, Julia.
Time for homework. Next item up on our agenda, we have two high school overnight field trips for our perusal and our vote. The first one would be the Newburyport High School varsity hockey team. Is there a, is there somebody that? Ah, ah.
Did everyone receive a copy of the agenda? Yes. This is the second year that the varsity-
Could you introduce yourself?
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
My name is Bob Clark. I'm the athletic director for Newburyport High School. This is my first year as the athletic director. Thank you. Paul is unable, Paul, you mean, the head hockey coach, is unable to make this evening's meeting. He had a prior commitment, so he asked me to represent, and Mike is here if there's any additional questions. But the high school hockey team for the second year is going down to Cape Cod to play in a tournament versus Barnstable High School, and they play Barnstable in the first round, and then their second round will be the winner of the Springfield Cathedral, I think Franklin game, so they're down there for two nights, the 26th and the 27th of December over the Christmas break. They believe in Newburyport at approximately 2:30 in the afternoon, and depending on where they finish, either in the winner's bracket or the loser's bracket, they'll come back on the 28th. Included in the cost and the price are accommodations for two nights in Hyannis, also breakfast, lunch, and dinner, you know, for the athletes. There are four coaches going down, approximately 24, when I say 24 students, it'll be 24 students in attendance, and there's also a number of parents who will be attending, you know, with the team as they provide transportation for other student athletes to and from the convention center down in Hyannis.
Anybody have a question, or Mr. Keown?
I move to approve the field trip.
Oh, I think, oh, all right, let's do that first, sorry. Second, discussion. Mr. Keown. I mean, Mr. DeCantor.
Yes, under the estimated student cost line?
Yes.
It's $156. If there are financial hardships, the hockey boosters can help?
Yes.
Who are the hockey boosters?
Who are the hockey boosters? There would be parents whose children have played in the hockey program, friends of, people who have played in the hockey program over the years and things like that.
Okay. There's a reason I'm asking the question, Bob, and you may not have been, well, you weren't obviously involved in the discussions when it happened. Four years ago, was it, Bruce? I think four years ago, the school committee adopted a policy on fundraising for athletics that specifically stipulated that we would not have individual booster clubs, that everything would be centered through a all-sports booster club which exists, and that it would then be the decision of the athletic director and the principal to request the funds and how to use those funds. I've seen that we've somehow slipped away a little bit from that, and we have, again, well-meaning parents and alumni stepping up to try and help us close some of the financial gaps we have in athletics. I just wanted to make sure that we do go back to the letter of the law, channel it through the central boosters club, that the requests come not to the coach, but that if you have need for something like this as athletic director, with the principal's approval, you can ask for the money directly yourself. That's a very key element, we believe, in maintaining equity between sports and making sure that we are meeting all of the stipulations of Title IX. So when I see something like hockey boosters here, I cringe a little bit and get concerned about that. So if it does exist in that way, if we can handle it, I would appreciate it, and we continue to value and appreciate the support of these people. It's just the way in which we take the management of the, the financial management off of the hands of the coaches and put it between the booster organization and the athletic director, and we make it all sports for, so that we can ensure that if you need money for, I don't know, a trip for the varsity cheerleaders, you have the way of reaching that money as well, and we don't need to organize a group of varsity cheerleader moms to support the effort and whatever else it might be. Other than that, I fully support this approach. It's a great program, and clearly it's benefited our student athletes very well, so I'm in full support.
Thank you. Any further comment? All those in favor of the approving the Newburyport High School varsity hockey team trip to Cape Cod?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries? Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Mayor.
Bob, while you're here, I just wanted to ask one question. There was a Richie Eaton Foundation that was established upon his retirement from the bank, which was set up specifically to help to defray athletic fees across the neighboring high school communities. I was curious if we have received any funding to support?
This year, we have not. In the past, Richie has donated monies that would go specifically for students who could not pay the, you know, the users' fees. The money was used to offset students who weren't able to pay the users' fees. I believe, I see Richie on Friday nights, but I believe there's a meeting coming up. I'm not quite sure when it, I think it may, he may have an annual meeting on in November about, with his trust.
To talk about that.
Right, right. So we did talk about that, and I believe the meeting is coming up in November.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Second.
Thank you.
The second field trip up for our approval is a band field trip to New York City. Oh. And what instrument does he play?
Every instrument.
Pots, pans, cabinets.
Yeah, no, he's got real drums and pianos.
Wow.
He's very well behaved, too.
That's everything we have in the band room. Hi, I'm Steve Cohen. I'm the band director at NHS. What I've put before you there is the basic outline of what we hope will be a trip to New York City, the gist of which, the primary function, will be for students to play live on the foyer or the outside area of Lincoln Center, which, if you're not familiar, that's where the Metropolitan Opera, and then the New York Philharmonic, and many of their theaters, the theater arts are located, and it's, that would probably be our biggest audience of the year, of my tenure, of who knows how far back. Plus, the next day on Saturday, we would play for a renowned educator, music educator, we don't know who that is at this point, who would listen to us perform, and then give us a clinic and give us tips for how to become even better. Along the way, we would do some sightseeing in New York City, see a Broadway show, and have a little trip to Six Flags, which is in New Jersey, give the kids a little time to blow off some steam and have some fun as well. The dates on there are April 4, 5, 6. We would miss a day of school, and everyone would be given prior notice that you are responsible for everything that comes your way from having missed that day. Hopefully, they'd be able to get some work in advance and maybe have it done, certainly on due date, maybe before.
Could I hear a motion, and we can open this up for discussion?
No, move.
Second, discussion. Mr. Keown?
On your application, Steve, you only list yourself as a chaperone?
Sure. At this point, I don't have a list of chaperones, but I want three other people in addition to myself, probably an additional staff person from the school and some parents.
Okay.
I do have a parent who's ready to say yes, who is, she's a teacher over in Triton, so she's already cored. Everyone would be cored.
My, I would certainly approve this trip in a heartbeat.
Okay.
Provided your application was amended to indicate that you will go with at least yourself plus three chaperones.
Oh, I will so am that. Thank you.
You're representing at least one of the chaperones.
That's fair.
Okay. Yourself?
Mary Ellen.
Mary.
Steve and I had that, had this conversation this morning about, you know, looking for additional staff and parents to go with him, so he would not be traveling alone.
I imagine it's probably not very difficult to find people.
That's the plan, yes.
Any further questions?
Oh, that's very exciting.
All those in favor with the addition of three more people to accompany you?
Sure.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Yes.
Can I just make a comment? Steve, just want to thank you for all the work you're doing in getting the musicians to the football games. It's so important for you to be seen in the community, and the comments that I hear in the stand with each passing game is that, "That's a getting really good." We appreciate the effort that they put into it, and-
Stop talking, Daddy. He's getting slapped in the face.
But thanks for all the work you do.
Thank you for saying so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Bye.
Bye, Daddy.
You were on camera, too. Next item on our agenda is an update for our building projects. I am going to turn that over to-
Steve.
Steve Burcom.
I didn't know if you wanted me to go to you first.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Hey, Steve. Let's start by apologizing for the heat in this room. We've shut the air conditioning down for the season to save energy, so.
No, that's a good thing.
Yes, it is.
That's good.
I will start with the Bresnahan project tonight. Everything is going well up there. We're seeing a lot of progress. I'll talk about two different sections of the building. Building A is the administrative wing that houses the offices, the gym, the library, the cafeteria, and Building B is the classroom wing, the three-story classroom wing. So I'm going to refer to those a couple places here, just so you know which ones I'm talking about.
Steve, can you turn your microphone to you? Thank you. People are having a little bit of difficulty hearing you.
Okay, so the roof on the Building B section is complete, and the Building A roof will be complete by the end of this week. If you've gone by, you've probably seen a lot of progress on the exterior brickwork on the Building B section. They completed that brickwork on the south-facing side of the building last week, and are moving around to the north side of Building B. They'll put that together over the next couple weeks, and they're also doing the lower sections on Building A, so they're working very diligently to get the building closed in before winter gets here. The windows are scheduled to be delivered sometime this month, and those will start to go in place as soon as they're here.
Steve, how'd the tests go last week?
The tests on the windows at Bresnahan were great.
Good.
The test that the mayor is referring to is that we have a testing agent come out, and first they do a, an air pressure test, they hook a machine up to a sample window that was installed in the building to make sure there's no excessive, or no air infiltration. They basically blast air, pressure air, at the window to make sure there's no infiltration. And then to make it more interesting, then they start to add water and then blow water at it as if it were basically a hurricane situation, and we had very good results at the Bresnahan windows with no leakage there. So that was very, very good news, very, even the manufacturer of the windows was saying that the test was far beyond what they ever test for in their, in their factory, so he was very pleased to pass the test. The concrete slabs within the building are about 90 percent complete. There's just a couple more small sections, the cafeteria, the kitchen area, and some mechanical spaces where the concrete floors need to be poured. That will happen by the end of this week, and all the concrete will have been poured in the building. Interior walls in Building B have all been framed, so all of the, all of the rooms are framed up in Building B, and the framers have started framing the walls in the Building A section in some of the offices. Mechanical, electrical, and plumbing roughens are happening now in Building B. They started up on the third floor and are working their way down, so there's a lot of good progress there. Third floor is pretty much almost done, and like I said, they're working their way down towards the first floor. Let's see, windows are coming this month, I mentioned that. The boilers and some of the other mechanical equipment is actually being installed later on this month as well, so that they can get that in place, so they can close up the last of the exterior walls. And the work on Murphy Avenue is ongoing right now and is expected to be completed over the next two or three weeks. That includes new sewer lines, new drainage. National Grid just recently contacted us, they want to put a new gas main up that road. The road will be paved, a base course of the road will be put in this fall, there'll be new curbing and sidewalk on one side of the road, and then when the project's complete next summer, we'll put a finished coat of pavement on Murphy Avenue. And that's basically where Bresnahan stands right now. Any questions about anything there?
I just wanted to add to that in that this project has absolutely turned upside down the neighborhood, you know, in Murphy and Norman, and for some of the residents on Myrtle. So we continue to meet with the abutters on a monthly basis and are doing, you know, everything we can to try and listen and address, you know, some of their concerns. For example, there was issues around dust. We asked them to be watering more to keep the dust down. We're looking at, at, working with them on picking out the right kind of fences and protecting as many trees for buffers as possible, so we're working very hard to address some of the issues that are being brought up by the abutters as we meet on a monthly basis.
How was the separation of the school and the construction site working out? Were you having any issues with, any complaints from the school, any complaints from the contractor?
No, there's, there's been no real issues. We have generally kept the construction traffic coming in Murphy Ave, but with the construction of that, at some times, it's been necessary to bring some of the vehicles in through the North Atkinson Street driveway. When that does have to happen, and we really try to minimize that because, you know, obviously the students are playing, they use that driveway as a playground during the day, we make sure there's some extra eyes out there to keep an eye on things, to make sure that there's no issues. But other than that, it's gone very smoothly. Tim Mullin, the construction superintendent, is very good about contacting Christina if there's anything that he feels is going to affect the school, and he keeps her informed with what's going on out there, so it's gone well.
Any other questions about Bresnahan? Yes.
Okay. North Mullin, as you know, we, we finished up Phase 1 in time to get the kids into school, which was a very good thing. There was a significant punch list of items that had to be completed. We, contractors, the various contractors and subcontractors have been working on knocking that down and have taken a big chunk out of that at this point, so that's moving along well. Phase 2 is now, and has been underway. Phase 2 is essentially eight classrooms on the end of the building facing towards the playground area. That is scheduled for completion at the end of December, but the contractor's actually looking to turn that over to us sooner than that, maybe as soon as Thanksgiving. They're very much ahead of schedule there and are trying to keep ahead of schedule to get ahead of things for next summer, because we've got a very aggressive schedule planned for next summer, so they're trying to keep ahead of things. So we're currently working with the principals to see what it would look like to swap those rooms over earlier than planned. There's a lot of logistics involved with that as far as planning what classes are going to go where and figuring out how to kind of make that happen seamlessly without interrupting the educational process, so there's a lot of planning that we still need to do to make that happen, but that's looking good at this point. And the new boilers have been fired up in that building. As you probably know, most of that building, or almost all of that building, has been electric heat for the past 40 years, and part of this project is converting that to a hot water system, so as the rooms get renovated, they're getting converted over to the, to the new boiler system, and that's in progress. So that's really where we're at with North Mullin right now. Any questions on that?
I just want to add too that Steve and both principals and I meet in a smaller meeting once a week to, just to stay on top of any issues that may come up from staff, and then we meet with the larger team also as a group once a week. So we are making sure that we are addressing issues as they come up and doing it in a very timely fashion.
I think the, during one of my routine site visits last week to the school construction site had, which is nice about visiting a site that is in phase in construction, because the kids are just thrilled, you know, having a chance to actually go into classrooms, talk to the kids, and they just, they love the color schemes, they love the classrooms. I mean, there's certainly punch lists needs to classrooms and some things that are being worked out, but one of the issues that we are dealing with right now is that we have lockers in the wrong places or not enough lockers. So we've moved some of the gym lockers into space, and we have one fourth-grade teacher who generously has said, "I'll wait," and so we're, you know, she's got, we're trying to figure out what to do for her space there, so we're trying to figure out the locker situation in the broad scheme of things. That's, you know, not such a terrible thing to have to be dealing with, is trying to figure out where we place more lockers, but it's just really nice, and the kids were all at, a group of the kids that I've talked to were at lunch, and they were all had bought lunch. They all told me they loved lunch, they loved the cafeteria, they loved the colors, so, you know, things, overall, the staff in the cafeteria, I've never seen them so happy, so this is all good. So we're moving forward, and one other question was, so where do we go with the windows since they failed the test?
The windows were being retested today.
Okay.
I didn't see the final results, but while I was there earlier this morning, it was going well, so I didn't, I haven't got a final report yet, but they were, the contractor and the manufacturer had implemented a fix that they thought was going to take care of the problem, and it was being retested today.
Okay, thank you.
And they will continue to do so until it's right.
Of course.
Yes.
Any further questions for, yes, Dan?
I just wanted to comment on the change of leadership. That with Gilbain. Billy, I think everybody remembers Billy, the young guy who was a construction super for Gilbain. He had to leave his position for Family Matters, and Gilbain brought in this gentleman, William Gregg, who really has an impressive resume. Billy was a great guy, don't get me wrong, he was doing a good job, but this guy just- just has an incredible resume of successes and he's done a lot. I don't have copies of it, but if you want to take a look at it, um, I think, uh, he, he will add more value to the project.
Yeah, I agree. Will has, um, done a great job of stepping in. He's obviously, um, he's only been there a couple of weeks at this point, but he's, um, you know, so he's catching up on things a little bit, but, um, he's got a really good way about him. He's, um, very much committed to making sure that, that punch list from Phase One, um, gets knocked down and that, uh, we don't have a similar punch list for Phase Two, that, that, that those things are all done, um, as much as possible before those Phase Two rooms get turned over to us. So, um, he, he's been a, a good addition to the team.
Yes.
I just, Steve, could you comment, uh, before the committee and the, the public who is watching the meeting, a little bit about, um, this is the first time, it's a requirement from, uh, the state that we have a, um, OPM. Can you comment a little bit now, as we've gone one year into the process, about the value of having those, an owner's project manager, the value that here he has brought to the project and, uh, you know, what, and perhaps the mayor, you wanted to mention something about that too. Just, uh, let us know how we, we feel our money is being spent.
I, I'll jump in on this one, because I don't know how we keep up with the demands of the Mass School Building Authority. This is such a different process.
Exactly what I was going to say.
Such a different process than when, when we renovated the high school under the old school building authority, under the Department of Education. It's the amount of paperwork, the amount of oversight that they have, which is comforting to the community, you know? Um, so, they, they are involved in everything in this project. And they do spot checks, they come out, they follow up on paperwork, they, I mean, it's, the stream is incredible. And if we did not have Tony Pruner and the team from Harry with us to be able to manage all of these processes, I'm not sure how we would be able to be working particularly in two school projects at the same time. They've been a tremendous asset.
Mr. Keon?
Well, one of the ways that these contractors make their money is by analyzing your bid down to the, every punctuation mark, every word, and they find, even though you may have something implied in the contract, if it's not stated, then they're not giving it to you. And that's where they make their money, in the change order later. Having the, uh, owner's project manager is, is really, uh, just a, a, a level of redundancy on value, making sure we're getting what we're paying for and that we know what we're paying for. And hiring like these testing companies, this, this testing company is, was a function. There's actually a few, uh, different companies like that, that here he has connected us with, to do, um, all sorts of testing, uh, and, and things like that. I've been really impressed.
And their pricing too. Not only did they let the architects price the, everything out, they have their own independent pricers who come. And so, that gives us a real good sense of what the value is we're getting for the money we're spending on these projects.
And then they force both of those guys to reconcile.
Any further questions for Steve at this point, Steve?
Yeah, there's one, uh, yeah. I drove by there last Wednesday night in the vicinity at nine o'clock, I just noticed a lot of cars. So, the work crews working into the nights often, or is there particular nights they may be trying to get certain things done?
Uh, no, they're working, they're working a second shift schedule now. Um, there's very little work going on during the day.
Okay.
It's, it's-
To accommodate.
To accommodate us.
Good, good.
Um, so, they're, they're working a, uh, basically a two to ten shift.
Okay, alright, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Burkhon.
You're welcome.
We look forward to your updates. Next on our agenda is a presentation of the Common Core. I'm going to turn that over to Assistant Superintendent Vic. I'm not going to put all your, like, curriculum assess, whatever you have.
No, it's good. Thank you. I'm just going to pass those around. Um, Emily and Liz, would you come up?
Do I have to? Are you going to blind me?
No, we're not going to use the projector, but, um-
Do, do we get a new projector, actually?
Yeah, it looks like it's new.
I think this is from the high school, because the one from Central Office-
Got thrown away.
Yeah, it, it, the dust.
Needed to.
It, it, the dust, it did. I'm just going to give these to you.
Oh, go ahead, please.
You can, you can stay there. Do you have space, um, do you want to move over?
Well, I want to start by, um, introducing Emily Russen again. You've met Emily Russen before and Emily used to serve as our literacy coach pre-K through three for the district. And her position has changed this year. She's now literacy coordinator, pre-K through eight, as well as Title I Director this year. So, Emily, glad to have her with us. And you have not yet met Liz Kinsley. And Liz Kinsley is our new STEM Coordinator, grades pre-K through eight. So, um, I'm really happy to have them both here tonight to help talk through some of the updates around Common Core standards, um, with you. But I'm going to start, I gave you a little handout, we've got a couple of handouts tonight. Uh, the first handout starts to give you some of the, uh, bigger picture. Last year, when we came and we talked about the Common Core standards, we discussed the fundamentals of what the standards were, what some of the key shifts in the standards were, and some of the ideas about how we were going to start to roll that out. And, um, tonight, I'm going to highlight again some of those key components to the Common Core standards that are, really make them different from what the Massachusetts curriculum frameworks are, were. And, um, and then we're going to give you some examples of how it's being implemented in the district and what kind of progress that we're making. And then also how we plan, the plans that are in place for sustaining the work as we move forward. So, if you see on the front page, really the, the, the pieces of the Common Core standards that have a big impact are the focus, coherence and rigor in both instruction and assessment. Those are expectations that have really been ramped up when we look at the Common Core. And when we think about focus, you know, we talk about, um, key content skills and practice at each grade level. Um, you know, it's not only foundational skills, but it brings our students to higher level thinking about what they're learning. It also encourages perseverance when problem solving. And that is a, a difficult skill to learn, how to stick with something until you get to the end. This is where, you know, we, we talk so much about 21st century skills, but they really become critically important as students, um, learn to problem solve, uh, construct logical arguments and communicate that knowledge. That's all a piece of the focus of the Common Core standards. Oftentimes, this gets addressed in the classroom setting, um, multiple standards get addressed in one really rich task. And so, that's really exciting when you start to see that happening in the classroom. And we see that quite frequently. Um, coherence is so important with the Common Core too. We started, this even came up in the, uh, conversation right before we started the school committee meeting, because these standards, um, build across the grade levels and they also are linked within the grades. So, it's really essential that vertical articulation happen when it comes to the Common Core, because we really have to ensure that, um, our students are ready for the next step as these standards really spiral through the grade levels. And so, it really provides the vehicle for a lot of the work that we have planned for our half-day release days and the other professional development one that we do with our teachers. Um, rigor, the rigor is certainly more intense. Um, the standards highlight conceptual understanding, procedural skill and fluency and the application of knowledge. And this is also spiraling all the time. And, um, students are faced with text and math problems that are more challenging and more difficult, but really will lead to stronger thinkers in the end. And I think that is one of the things that's really impressive about the Common Core standards, is that we're always working on building stronger thinking and learning skills for our students, bringing the thinking up to a higher level. Assessment, we started to talk a little bit about assessment, um, and that we have a new high stakes assessment right around the corner. Um, this year, we will be piloting the PARC assessment in Newburyport. We were one of the districts chosen by the state to do that. We will be piloting that, um, in English language, uh, English Language Arts. And, um, the, these assessments that are being built are developed to better assess how our students are doing relative to these more rigorous standards. So, there, you're going to see a little bit of a sample of that tonight. We've incorporated that into, uh, showing you some PARC samples with some of the examples that we're going to share with you around the Common Core standards. And then, of course, you know, this leads to an overarching, um, high expectation for all learners. And, um, when we think about that, it really emphasizes how important foundational skills are as we head into, uh, teaching and learning from these standards. And so, as a district, we've spent, uh, considerable time last year and again this year on examining and improving our tiered interventions, um, so that we can ensure that we're able, that all of our students are able to access the curriculum, because that will be very important, um, moving forward. One of the things that I want to say as we talk about implementation of this that, um, has stayed with me, two years ago, when, uh, Dr. Chen was here working with our math teachers on some professional development, one of the things Dr. Chen said is, you know, he was very involved in the development of these standards, that he thought it would take approximately fourteen years for full implementation of the Common Core standard. And I remember us all sitting there thinking, "My goodness," you know, like, how outrageous is that? But, um, you know, when you're talking about full implementation, full understanding and moving all of your structures to support and surround this level of education, um, I certainly hope we'll get there before fourteen years, but it is, the point is, it, it's not an overnight, overnight process. It's not a one-year process, it won't even be a two-year process. You know, the implementation of these standards will be a multi-year process until we get to the point that we're feeling really confident, teachers feel like they understand the depth and breadth of these standards, um, to the point that they can fully implement them in a way, uh, for our diverse population to be able to access them. So, I just wanted to kind of frame it with some of that, because that's the bigger picture. And Emily's going to talk to you a little bit about, um, some of the, uh, some of the key points in English Language Arts and Literacy.
And I feel what you just said, Angela, in terms of, um, you know, it, in some ways, it seems like these standards are a, a big leap from where we're coming from, but I don't think it's a big leap from where our teachers and where our parents want to see our students achieving, wouldn't you say? I mean, I think you hear it probably in parents that present here, where we have, um, we want our children and our students to reach their greatest potential. And so, these are written for that college and career readiness that Angela said, um, so that, um, we really exit our students ready for that rigor in college or for whatever they're preparing to do. So, in, um, in Language Arts and Literacy, on that first page that you have, it just outlines again some of the guiding principles and anchor standards that are in literacy. Uh, and, and some of the main points there are that now instruction in reading and writing and language and speaking don't just belong to the English teacher, they belong to all the teachers, it's a team approach. That's, I think, a shift that we were already making and, um, it's echoed in these standards. Uh, so, there are, there are standards that belong to reading and writing and then you also see literacy standards in social studies and history and technical subjects. And, um, and history and science still have their own standards, but they're at these literacy standards across all domains. Some of the guiding principles are outlined at the bottom of that page and it really speaks to the spirit of the standards, that these standards are asking us, um, to help students develop, um, develop thinking and language through interactive learning, uh, draw on literature in order to develop students' understanding of their, uh, literary heritage. And then, this is a major shift, to draw on informational text and multimedia in order to build academic vocabulary and strong content knowledge. I'm going to illustrate that with a few examples tonight. And, um, and then, as Angela mentioned, others are here, but also providing explicit skills, instruction in reading and writing, so that we, um, have strong foundational skills that carry us through to this higher level of thinking. On the, uh, following page, uh, there's some, a few examples of what this looks like in our classrooms today. So, if we take that guiding principle number three, around informational texts and multimedia, uh, and, and what that is speaking to is an even broader umbrella than just nonfiction texts, but, um, you know, websites and, um, books that have information that you wouldn't necessarily call nonfiction, uh, but they, but you learn from them. And, um, there are ten standards in reading for literature and ten standards in reading for informational text, as well as writing and language standards. Um, so, I'm going to talk through this, it's, it's not going to be in a linear way, but you'll have this for reference later. Uh, the standard, uh, reads across grades in a way that, um, is appropriate for that grade level. So, in preschool, for instance, standard three for informational texts reads, "With prompting and support, represent or act out concepts learned from hearing an informational text read aloud." So, that's very appropriate for a four-year-old, you, we can read a book aloud and act it out. Then by elementary grades, by fourth grade, that same standard reads, "Explain events, procedures, ideas or concepts in historic, scientific or technical texts, including what happened and why, based on specific information in the text." So, now the student is doing the reading and the student is finding the evidence at fourth grade. By middle school, that same standard is speaking to analyzing the interactions between those ideas in a text. So, you might be looking at multiple texts and multiple ideas and bringing those together. So, it's something that if we start at the early grades, we really feel will build appropriately. And how we've done that so far in preschool, um, they did some summer curriculum work on informational text and identifying read-alouds appropriate for their three and four-year-olds, uh, and, um, identified areas for vocabulary and comprehension work. In elementary grades, we've added, um, quite a few texts to their classroom libraries, their literacy closets, their read-alouds. Uh, there's a renewed emphasis on persuasive writing and, um, argument and, uh, and which leads us to middle school, which, uh, has worked, uh, on literacy across the content areas. For example, in science, they now subscribe to science magazines and in one lesson, um, a teacher provided an example of, uh, students had six articles on genetic mutation from the New York Times that they were, uh, comparing and synthesizing information from. So, this is very real-world, real purposeful-driven work. Uh, and echoing the focus, coherence, rigor assessment that Angela spoke to, what does that look like? Well, um, in second and third grade, we're teaching units in biography later in the year and I included, uh, an end of unit assessment from third grade. This is from one of the model curriculum units that we have been using, that the state gave us and, um, and the teachers have raved about. Uh, it's in microscopic print on the back of your page. I can provide you a larger copy. But, uh, any questions? The performance task is in the very top lines and, um, it, it synthesizes many different standards. So, you'll see later through, down the page, there are actually four different standards being addressed in this task at third grade. And, um, whereas before, a biography unit may have been, you know, "Let's read a biography together," now you read a biography and write a report. This is, um, reading multiple biographies, um, a higher quantity of, and complexity of biographies. And then in the end, students will revise and update a biography about the subject they read about, and although the subject's life has not changed, the way people organize information has changed. So, find a powerful way to communicate this. Um, so, they have to know about text structures, they have to know about opinion writing and they have to, um, they have to, uh, you know, make a good argument for their changes. That's in third grade. And then in seventh grade, I gave you a copy of one of the sample items from PARC, which is about the biography of Amelia Earhart. Again, it's in small print and, um, I realized afterwards, there was this, uh, that sample item one, which is based on the information, the text, write an essay that summarizes and explains the challenges Earhart faced. But, another sample that I did not include gets even more difficult and speaks to, "You've read three texts." So, in the assessment, they're given three separate texts, the seventh grade describing Amelia Earhart. All three claim that she was brave and courageous, um, and now write an essay that analyzes the strength of the argument. So, I mean, that, you know, that used to be college and now that's seventh grade. So, um, so if that's what we're expecting in seventh, we have to be having those conversations in appropriate ways at younger grades. And then in terms of, um, Angela mentioned that there were some questions around costs associated- And then, in terms of, Angela mentioned that there were some questions around costs associated with these changes. We've been, we have been given some state literacy grant money that has supported the implementation of our model curriculum units, which we're really expanding upon and have some beautiful books because of. In addition, supplementing that, we have generous NEF grants that have added to our libraries in all grades, pre-K to eight. So, we do have some great books on the shelves, very current books that teachers are using. And there, you know, our budget has been very tight, so it's not like we've been asking for more than that. So as things come up, we certainly would want to discuss that further, but that's where we've been supporting the curriculum from those two areas. And Liz, do you want to continue?
No, Liz, before you start, I just wanted to highlight a little bit of what the high school was doing in English.
Oh, I apologize.
That's okay, Emily, that's all right. I've got some bulletproof notes, I talked with all of the department chairs before this meeting, and they all sent me just their highlights, and we just kind of brought those, I brought some of those forward because not only is the English department at the high school working on the implementation of the Common Core, but also in history and science. They too are working on the literacy standards because those literacy standards go across the content areas. So, the English department has done quite a bit of work, and they've identified the areas that they're well-aligned, and they've also identified some of the areas that they feel, they feel they could continue to grow in. And as you can see, some of it is around complex texts, some of it is around nonfiction texts. They've developed a new unit last year at the junior level around nonfiction reading, and it culminated in the documentary on transcendentalism. Some of you might remember that last year. This year, they're working as a team building nonfiction units across the board, so in all of the grade levels. They're using a lot of assessment data to make their decisions. They've spent quite a bit of time doing that work as a department, and it's been really good work. They're also looking at some of the PARC evaluations and the samples that have been put out from PARC, and they're looking for ways to align their curriculum better so that their students are better prepared when that test comes along. History has spent a lot of time on, working on their common assessments and making sure that their curriculum is aligned, but that their common assessments are also including the literacy standards, which was something they didn't have built into their assessments. And the science department is doing some similar work with their assessments, but they're also looking at how the literacy standards for science fit into lab reports and open-response questions that they're working with. Also, you know, there's a lot of textbook reading in science, and so there's needing to be more instruction around reading a text, how you pull out the most important information, how you take notes from a text. That's all part of the literacy standards within the Common Core. So the science department is also working on that. One of the goals that they've set for themselves is to incorporate more periodical readings in the work that they're doing in the science department.
Can I, before we go on to math, can you talk a little bit about how writing fits into all of this? Because I know it's a huge piece of it, and...
There are three areas of writing, opinion, informational, and narrative, and they each need to represent about a third of the curriculum.
Could you repeat those again, please?
Sure, it's opinion writing, informational writing, and narrative writing.
Thank you.
So, that's a place teachers have had to adjust their teaching. If they were doing a majority of narrative, personal narratives, they have to, you know, really focus on some research projects. And then, it's, you know, part of the guiding principles are that multiple standards are addressed at once. So there is a lot of reading and writing together. So, so that's another push, as well as research. And I did, I meant to share these books that I brought that have been purchased, just as samples of what informational text looks like at different levels, so I can make these available to you later.
And I guess the second question I have is training. How are we training our teachers to do, to integrate all these new, you know, areas? I mean, you know, writing, to teach writing, opinion, information, what are we doing for training?
We have a few different things in the works and then plans to go further with that. So, the model curriculum units that I mentioned are pilot from the state. They've released a full year's worth in literacy in grades two and three, and samples of two units in other grades. And our teachers have really been using those a lot to illustrate the key shifts in the standards, and I think in a way, they serve as, they are model curriculum units, but they really do serve as a model as to how to integrate multiple standards and have pretty in-depth lessons and assessments that go with them. So that, we're doing study around that. We have a, an emphasis on certain priorities at different grade levels throughout because we can't take it all on at once. So, we identify those with the principles, and we use curriculum planning time and to identify those areas. Usually, those areas are addressed from their assessments to help us see where our next steps are. And Angela will talk later about our key plan this year in terms of alignment, but that's where the training's coming from mostly. Do you want to add to that?
Yeah, and some of the work is being done even within the groups of teachers that are working collaboratively, because as you know, we have smaller professional learning communities that work every half-day together, and a lot of that work is happening through collaboration. You know, teachers are sharing experiences that they're having. One of the things when you're implementing new standards, it requires teachers to take a lot of risks and to try some things that they haven't tried before. And one of the things that our teachers have really gotten good at is how to collaborate around their experiences and learn from those experiences. And like Emily said, I'm going to be talking about how we've added another layer to that this year, that I think will make that a little more objective in the process and help them really formulate a needs assessment and understand the things that are going well and how to share those things that are going well.
It is quite a leap for a science teacher to be teaching reading skills.
Well, and you know, if I could speak to that just for a second, that was the biggest panic at the beginning, I have to tell you. And not only panic, but pushback. Like, listen, I'm, my day is full with what I, with the content standards. Please don't tell me now that I have to teach literacy. But I think, once teachers delved into the standards and started to read what they were all about, the first comments I heard is, "Oh, we do that when we do this. Oh, and we're doing this when we do this." It was starting to understand what those standards really meant, being able to identify the places in the curriculum where at least portions of that were being done, and then understand how we had to move from there to meet the full standard. So, I don't think there was really any place that we were starting from scratch. And the content teachers, once they better understood the literacy standards, realized, "I am not going to teach kids how to decode in my class. I'm going to teach them how to read a lab report, write a lab report."
Thank you.
Thank you for asking me here to speak to the changes in the math standards. So, on the next page, beyond where Emily left off, we have a section on the math standards. And so, we have new standards that include both math practice and also math content standards. And really, the content standards are pretty much what you would expect the content to be, but the practice standards are where there's really been a big change and a big shift for both educators as well as for students. And so, the math practice standards are based on processes and proficiencies that have longstanding importance in mathematics. So, and because a new report has been really at the forefront of adopting models and curriculum and materials that are really standards-based, even when the standards were different, then a lot of the work that students have been doing K to eight, pre-K to eight, are, have been sort of project-based, problem-based math learning all along. So, the change in rigor has definitely ramped up, but a lot of the ways that teachers have been teaching math are pretty much ingrained in what's been going on around here for a long time. So, the standards include making sense of problems and persevering and solving them. And so, that's something that they've learned at, really at an early age, is to take a problem, to persevere, to try and solve it, and then to also communicate their knowledge. To reason abstractly and quantitatively, and I'm going to tell you a little bit more about that when I give you my examples on the subsequent pages. Construct viable arguments and critique the reasoning of others, and that's really the basis of the, both the investigations and the connected math programs that are being used K to eight. Model with mathematics, that's a big focus on the new standards, is using models, and especially visual models. Using appropriate tools strategically, that's something that when I looked at the MCAS results for all the grades in math, I noticed that there were some gaps in using the tools. And so, I think by doing some work around using the tools with both the science and the math teachers, I think that we're going to fill those gaps pretty easily just by being aware that those are areas of gaps that we have.
Can you sort of define what you mean when you're using the word "tools"?
Yes, a tool can be anything as simple as a ruler. So, we noticed that on, for instance, there was a third-grade math question, MCAS question, and it asked students to tell what the, what the length of the line was, using, they have a ruler that's part of their test, you know, packet. And 91% of our students did not answer that problem correctly. So, that, we, I had a problem with the question to begin with, but still, that's still, that's still a huge number of students that either did not know how to use the tool or did not properly use the tool. So, and it's similar things to that, but that's the simplest one really to use as an example. Attending to precision, so that could also be, you know, do you know where the gradations are on a ruler, or if, is it, is it a square or a rectangle? So, being precise about what you're being asked for. Looking for and making use of structure, looking for and express regularity in repeated reasoning. So, and that's the foundations of all math. If you understand the patterns, then you are much more able to be successful in math. And these guiding principles, I'm not going to go through, they're very straightforward and important that all students can learn. We expect that all students will learn. So, and then, these are some key shifts that I've outlined, just looking at the geometry domain. So, I looked at the progression of teaching fractions, pretty much, from, going from K to eight and into high school, and we noticed that in years past, with the old standards, the focus on fractions was really much later into elementary school. So, into fifth and sixth grade is when the kids really started looking and using fractions to help build their proportional knowledge reasoning. And so, now, we're seeing that the focus is, has gone much lower, and we're looking at even focus in the first grade on some, looking at some ways that we can divide structures or shapes into equal shares. And so, I was recently looking at, or building, an interim assessment for grade two, and when we, when I was looking at the questions, I noticed that in the first-grade standards, students should be able to tell how many equal shares there are, up to four. So that means that when you look at this, building fraction language in first grade, this is an example of a question that is, what first graders should now be able to do is say, "Half the rectangle is blue," or that the circle is composed of four fourths, four quarters, or four equal shares. And the standards really look at, how can we then have kids build on, build from that to their proportional reasoning? So, we look at the, not just the focus being geometry, but also the coherence. So now, if we can, if we are able to have students in first grade be able to do this, then we can start to build. Okay, well then, if you've got, if this shape, this circle is, got four equal shares, then how much is one share equal? And so, you'll see that going through this example. And clarity, so the standards say that we're using precise language. So we're saying, what, how can we say, how many equal shares do we have? What percent of this, as they get older? What proportion of this whole is it? And so, we're looking at that using visual models. And then, the rigor, it's really, we've talked a lot about that, Angela and Emily and Susan and I, over the course of the last several months, about how can we really address the rigor, and we really need to start right away in kindergarten and first grade, because if we, the shift has gone, the rigor has really gone deep into the, into the elementary years. And giving rich problems to elementary students, where they really have to persevere, and they really have to tell you what's going on and think about it in more than one way. So a lot of these assessments are saying, "Can, explain it to me in more than one way." So, describe it and then communicate your knowledge. And then, you'll see, there's an example of a third-grade unit fraction, so now, we're building from just saying, "What's the equal share?", to looking at how we can use a number line to then count how many quarters we have, or how many portions we have, and then use a number line for that. And then, as we build into the sixth grade, you can see that there's a visual representation of a proportional relationship. And this is an example of something that we would see in the sixth-grade classroom in Connected Mathematics, which is the program that your students are using now in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And so, being able to express your proportional reasoning, you must really understand how that works in the lower grades before you do that. And then, of course, that's building the foundations for not just middle school now, but also for algebra and geometry going into the high school, which is, again, speaking to that career and college and career readiness that we've been interested in all throughout, and which is the reason, really was the primary reason for the, for the Common Core to begin with. I wrote a few reflections. I met with Sue Stone, who is the department head at the high school, and we looked at some of the things that, some ways to bridge the gap from the middle school to the high school. She's had a lot of dialogue with Wendy Phillips, who's at the middle school, and so, the three of us, I think, are going to be looking at ways to make sure that the students are prepared as they go to the high school, and this kind of describes a few ways that that's been done before, and that it's, we're going to be tackling it as we go, as we go forward.
Liz, before you go on, I just wanted to add to that. One of the things that I thought was interesting, as the high school department started to look at the Common Core and integrate the Common Core into their curriculum, the thing that became, this whole spiraling of the curriculum became so evident to them. Immediately, they came forward and wanted to talk about building vertical groups because they knew the only way they could truly be successful at the high school is if we had success starting in pre-K. And really needing to start our strong foundation there and work up so that they would truly be able to reach the levels of thinking that they want our math students to get to by the time they're in high school. Thanks, Liz.
Absolutely. And so, the next page is kind of a long, it's just an explanation as I kind of see it in terms of the key shifts. it in terms of the key shifts in instruction, assessment, and professional development. And we look at instructional gaps have been identified, all the way from K to eight, and then we're looking at how we're, how teachers can fill those gaps, either by building their own ancillary materials, building other ways of getting some of this information to the students, as well as providing realigned, very rich problems for students to solve. It's certainly been described to me that there are some areas where there is a need for some new materials or some more. What happened when the, when the Common Core was developed, I'm sure Angela's shared this with you many times, but the people that built the program, so the people, the book sellers, the textbook guys, the program people, everybody, even the standards-based programs that were being used for years, they've had a really hard time getting up to speed, because it meant that they had to really break down all of their programs and then build them up again. So, many, many school districts, not just yours, but every, many school districts, at least in math, have had to either make a lot of their own materials, or they've had to kind of re-engineer and trade between different grade levels for some of these problems. And it's not been easy, because when you think about what teachers do, they, you know, they are, they're working hard, and they've had a set of standards, and these new standards were much different, and they had to really reach across from different grade levels to, you know, to be able to speak to these really rich standards. And so, that work has been going on for a couple of years here, and people are working really hard, but there are still, there are still going to be gaps, and there's still going to be places where we could really use some new materials that help students really dig deeper into the, into the standards. I've given a couple of examples of how some summer work has gone on, some professional development, some of the professional learning communities that Angela was speaking to before, and some work that's been done to really try and help realign the curriculums and really get some more information for better, richer experiences for the kids. So, I've kind of done that. I gave you a little bit of an example of what's happening around the MCAS test, and Emily also spoke really well to that as well. And then the last page online is an example of how this, these new standards, if we start looking at the fractions and we build proportional reasoning, now you can see that this is a PARC assessment on, for a seventh grade, and it's, again, really a great assessment and a great way for students to really demonstrate that they understand what a proportional relationship is, and whether it is or not, and how you could, you could actually communicate that knowledge. These, all these PARC assessments are going to be done online. So, I think that's also a challenge for some of our students, because they don't have the experience, a lot of them do not have the experience that they need to have to answer a question like this online.
I like the start over button.
You like the start over button?
I know. It's not just undo, start over.
Right, because what happens is you get to a point, and you're like, "Shoot, I wish I did." I don't want to have to go back, yeah. So, anyway, I think I might have gone over my time.
I just wanted, I think the next piece is very important, because I want you to understand how this ties everything together and what we're doing across the district in terms of the practices that we have in place. So, I asked Angela if she would put together a sample to demonstrate to you how this all ties back into educator evaluation, into our curriculum, the curriculum work that's going on, because I want you to see the links that are clearly there.
Thanks, Susan. So, the graphic organizer on the front, or just this visual for you, is to see this cycle that just keeps continuing. At the center of it is student learning, but it's really all about collaborative practice that we've been working towards for several years now. But all the pieces have now entered the circle for a while. We only had several of them in place, and now they're there. But if you look at, you know, you'll see at the top that we talk about aligning our curriculum standards, not only Common Core, but all of the curriculum standards that we currently have. And in that work, we were working towards good vertical and horizontal articulation of that curriculum. So, we're not only looking at it at a grade level or within a content level, we're looking at it as it moves right through the district, and how do we articulate that? Once that is done, then it constantly, simultaneously, we're working on implementing research best practices, instructional practices in our classroom that align to those standards. We're working hard to build common assessments, and we've talked just a little bit, we've just started the discussion around district-determined measures, which is the next phase of the teacher evaluation system. But all this work that we're doing around building common assessment leads us right into the DDMs, or the district-determined measures. So, it feeds, all, one system is feeding another. From there, we're taking all of these assessments and student work, and we're having data-driven dialogues collaboratively. We're sitting, we're looking at student work, we're talking about what the data tells us about where our kids are excelling and where we still need to put some energy. Then from there, we move to data-driven refinements of our curriculum and our instructional practices, but not just based on what we think, based on what we're learning from student performance data. And we need to build better reporting systems and better communication systems around how the students are doing. And all of that ties into our educator evaluation system, the first two standards, which are curriculum and instruction. This all feeds that aspect of the evaluation system. So, if you turn to the next page, I'm not going to walk you through all of it. I know that we're, we've spent a lot of time on this this evening, but, you know, what I am going to give you the opportunity to do is read it, and at another meeting, if you have any questions about this, we could certainly answer those questions. But I'm just going to tell you what you have in front of you. The sheet that says "Questions for Dialogue" is something that we have trained all of our administrators and all of our teacher leaders on, and it really outlines the process for continuing this work this year. It talks about how our release days will be spent. It also talks about how we will continue the work in one faculty meeting a month. We have two faculty meetings a month. One will be for this school business, the other will be dedicated to curriculum instruction and assessment work, particularly data dialogues. So, this gives you a little bit of an outline about that. The following page is the template for reflection that all of our CAB curriculum teacher leaders will be using after the half-days. So, you can see what the focus is. They're actually going to be focusing on specific units that they're teaching, what standards were addressed within that unit, what instructional practices are in place, or which ones perhaps need to be put in place. And then, this is where it gets exciting for me, is that then the teachers are going to decide collaboratively what evidence they're going to collect to bring back to that faculty meeting to look at, how well is it working? So, they're going to make decisions about what kind of student work they're going to collect, bring that back to that faculty meeting where they have the data-driven dialogue. The template on the next page is the reflection sheet after that data dialogue that they're having around the evidence that they chose to see how things were going. And then the last sheet is an organizer for those conversations, so that they know they're going to follow a format when they work through this, they'll become, they'll become very comfortable with that process. But, the part that Susan was speaking to that is really so important to all of us is, these are a lot of pieces, but when these pieces are put together, they lead to excellence. And that's our objective this year, is to really hope that all of the staff put all of the pieces together, keep our objectives focused on the alignment of the curriculum, the implementation of that alignment, and looking at the data to see how we're doing. But in that, their teachers are gathering evidence that they can use for the evaluation system. All of this work is connected, and that's really our goal, is to help everybody understand the connections, because then it's not so overwhelming.
And, you know, I want to say, when you look at this visual, we are not, you know, we're not even around this wheel at all.
No.
And we are in the process of really looking at, that's the, that's why we needed this whole process to come together, because we need to figure out, okay, where do we need to put some more resources in here? Where do we need more professional development? And it's going to vary in terms of how we're doing. But it's also why it was imperative, from my perspective, that we build in the rest of these documents, so that there's accountability there. And, you know, I can look at these three and meet with them and say, "All right, let's go over. We just had our first release day. Let's look at how it was used. Let's look at the feedback that we received from that. Do we need to tweak anything?" That's going to keep people focused. It also, one of my other goals, as you know, was to, and we are doing a lot here, but it was to really focus on that, in particular, for the teachers, that vertical articulation of the curriculum, because that is, I have heard more about that, and that we need to focus there than any other one thing in talking with staff so far. That is the number one thing that they want to achieve. And that really is about, that if I'm, if I am a fourth grade teacher, that as we go through and we talk about what's happening in the fourth grade, I still need to understand what's going on in the grade level before me, and do we have things put in the right places, and what's happening after me? Am I making sure that I am doing exactly what I need to do, so that when that student moves into the fifth grade, they're prepared, they're prepared for the next cycle of instruction? And as you can see, those are, these will be ongoing conversations forever, if we're doing it well, because we'll always need to be assessing. Standards will change again. We'll have new areas that we need to implement, and it's, it needs to be an ongoing cycle with accountability. And I think that we have a good blueprint here. Is it perfect? I'm sure it's not, but we'll tweak it as we go along. But I wanted you to have a sense of the, of how everything was connected together.
May I ask you a question, Angela?
Of course you may.
I'll open it up, but I'm looking at communication reporting systems. Where does our report card fit into this? Have we updated it? Are we giving the message to parents about this?
That's a great question. We're in the process of doing that.
All levels of?
Not all of it. Elementary, we're looking at elementary right now, because our elementary report cards are a standards-based report card.
Right, well, yeah.
And our standards have changed.
Right.
So, we've made some adjustments to the elementary report cards as the standards have changed.
Okay.
So, there've been minor adjustments, but we are working, currently, we've got some groups of teachers that are working right through the elementary levels on this. All the teachers have been involved in it. But one of the things that we thought was really important to do in those early phases was to really be able to identify what our objectives are around our reporting system. Who is it you're reporting to? What kind of information do you want to report? And then what's the best approach to doing that? So, we're in the process of refining that. At the high school and middle school level, it's a little bit different, because they're on a grade system. And so, it's different than the elementary. But right now, it's essential that the elementary are better aligned, so that they're doing better communication around what's actually happening in the classroom in a way that makes sense to the parents, but also so the parents can see the shift
Right.
in what the expectations are for students at each grade level. So, the work is underway.
Any questions, Mr. Keon?
A couple of questions. You know, it sounds great.
It is great.
Well, I, there's going to be some issues that you must be projecting out. I mean, are you going to sort of sneak this up on the kids, or is it going to, is it going to be rolled out to them? Because you admit it, you say, "Increase rigor and higher expectations." There's probably going to be a little resistance, I would imagine.
To the students, do you mean? Is that what you're saying, Dan? Are you asking about the students?
Well, I'm asking more in general about projected problems, adjusting to this, maybe keeping in mind the special needs component, maybe keeping in mind the average student that we have right now that struggles to be average and doesn't have the luxury of a special needs classification with all those extra supports. I mean, I just see, I just see potentially increasing the number of kids that may learn to really dislike school even more than they already do. And that's a population that is often ignored in this, in this form, number one. Number two, what happens to the MCAS? I know everybody says the MCAS is going away, but it's not gone. So, we're still, and unfortunately, that fabulous publication, Boston Magazine, and whatever criteria they decide ranks a school, is one of the biggest windows the public has as to how the schools are doing. They don't bother to read an actual assessment of a school. It's the Boston Magazine ranking of the school. And unfortunately, that's the world we live in. So, I have questions about how all this, these, the MCAS and the follow-up and projected issues with this, and then supports that maybe we're going to have in place.
Angela, do you mind if I just speak to that just quickly? One thing that we know is that, and one of the biggest complaints is, "Well, where's the drill? You know, where are the multiplication tables? Where's the..." Well, kids hate that, but kids really like these really authentic problems. They really do. They like to work together, they like to problem-solve, and they like to be given the time and, for someone to present a problem and say, "Use the tools that you have. Use your tools to solve this problem." And then communicate that to your peers and defend your problem. Is, "Did you get the right answer?" Yeah, but is that really all that it's about? Well, not always. Part of it is, "Well, I got the same answer as Emily got, but I used a different way of finding that out." But when Emily describes her way of finding the problem, the answer to the problem, I might say, "Well, that's a more efficient way of doing it, so I'm going to use Emily's strategy from now on." But maybe not, because this one works for me and I get the right answer. Kids love that. Kids love to communicate with each other. Kids love to problem-solve together. Kids love to talk about their knowledge and their understanding and their experiences. And kids hate the drill. They hate it. I just read an article the other day about, "How Come the Common Core Stinks?" Well, it stinks because we're not getting kids ready for the, for the drill that they're going to need. What? Their kids aren't going to need, they've got a calculator. Use it. You know what I mean? So...
Yeah, you know, you may have misunderstood my question.
Oh.
What I said, and what I started with is, "This is fantastic."
Yeah.
It's almost too good to be true, because you've got a percentage of kids that don't love school.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not saying they don't love school because of drills, they might not, for whatever reason. And I'm just wondering if there's a projected downside to this that we need to prepare for.
I just want to, let me speak to the MCAS transition, and then Emily, maybe you can talk to the intervention piece. Is that what you're thinking about? Okay. So, the MCAS transition, we're in that transition right now, Dan. So, it's been happening over the last few years. And last year, half of the tests, half of the questions on the MCAS test were based on the Common Core standards, and half of them were still based on the Massachusetts standards. This year, our students will still have MCAS, but all the questions will be based on the Common Core. So, and then we're going to move towards PARC. So, this year, we're starting with piloting PARC, and we're starting to move away from MCAS and into the PARC assessment, which is really a new generation of assessment. It really allows the students to, it's more of a performance-based assessment. So, it gives the students many more opportunities to show their thinking about their answer. So, that, it's a progression. None of this is happening overnight. You know, as we move towards this, it's different, this is hard work. All of this is hard work, and that's why we have to keep our, our... And that's why we have to keep our focus narrow as we move along, and we get, we bite off a piece of it at a time. Our teachers are transitioning. As our teachers transitioning, they're transitioning our students, little bit at a time. Every time they try something new, every time they incorporate a new strategy, the students are getting used to that. So, that's when I said, when Dr. Chen said 14 years and that sounded so outrageous, but when you think about full implementation, it is many years before you will be fully implemented. There's no way you can do it overnight. No one could endure that, educators or the kids.
Right.
You know, so it will be a gradual transition.
I think it speaks to, again, what you brought up around training, too. Because there, I think the interpretation is, even though we're feeling this stress as educators, we don't want our students to feel that stress. So, our goal isn't to, you know, push them forward, but, but more to grant them equity in the curriculum that a sliver of the population has always had. But why has it just been a sliver? Right? So, how can you make that more accessible, more approachable to all students and make them all really ready for whatever choices they want? So, we speak about that a lot in what we call response to intervention. When we, when we're assessing and we feel that students in our general population who aren't on IEPs are not where we want them for grade level, then we have meetings at each building level to address what we think would be appropriate to help them get there. And we are, that's another area that we hope to diversify more of the interventions we have available to all students at any time. So, that helps accelerate their progress, too. And so, we keep an eye on those foundational skills at the same time.
Thank you.
Andrew.
I think this is fantastic work. I'm thrilled to see it. And I think for the first time, personally, I have the confidence to be able to look a parent in the face and answer the question, why do we need so many professional development days? Which has been an issue for us year after year after year. We know the teachers work hard. And this is really focused on the work that has to be done, the progression of how it has to be done. So, I want to commend you on all of this, Angela and your team. And I would invite that we turn these two handouts into a two or four-page leaflet brochure or something. Pull out the edU Babbel, put it in real English, and get it out to the parent community through the PTOs, through the websites, through whatever ways we can. Because it truly explains the change in education. The word that I was looking for in this, and I, as I was hearing, which is one of the things I think has been missing in education, and I think addresses Dan's point a little bit, is relevance. This work makes learning relevant to our students. And all kids like to learn when it's relevant to them. When it's drill and kill, and it's learn the multiplication, learn your times tables, the way I learned, you know, three times three is nine, three times three is nine, three times three is nine. If I repeat it six times, maybe I'll get it right next time. That's not the way we operate anymore. We don't recite to ourselves in 1492 Columbus sailed the ocean blue. We go and we Google it. And so, things are changing. The way we think and the way we operate it are changing. And this, for the first time since I've been on the school committee, at least in six years now, I think truly provides a roadmap of what it is that we need to accomplish on behalf of our kids. So, congratulations, great work. I think there's a lot of work that needs to be done with this to make it truly something that we can get out to the public and get them to understand and digest this. You know, this is the old Winston Churchill saying, please forgive my long speech, I didn't have time to write a short one. And that's what we need to work on next. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes.
I actually have quite a few comments. When you talk about vertical articulation, are you really talking about gaps? Because you identify gaps in here relative to math from K to eight or, and basically, anyway, are you really talking about gaps and identifying them so they don't get bigger? Because frankly, if there's a gap and you don't attack it, it's just going to get bigger, correct? Okay. All right. Because I'm, you know, very familiar with the issue of achievement gaps in public education in the United States. And it's been an issue for a long time. And I think it's fair to say that if you went to pretty much any large public school superintendent and you asked them what their goal is, as superintendent, it would be to reduce the achievement gap between various groups. I know, and if no one else here knows, then shame on you, but I know that in Massachusetts, our groups of kids used to test really, really well. In fact, probably the best in the nation. And I also believe that it was some feeling that by the state joining into the Common Core, we were actually lowering our standards a little bit. And I don't know if that's what you said about how certain people need to break things down. But I understand the Common Core is here to stay, but I also think it's, and what I'm impressed with here is that there is a discussion about what's working. Because I think collaboration is really important. From having students come through our schools, especially in high school, I'd like to see more collaboration for our students. Because frankly, when they get to college, that's what colleges look for them to do. It's often that a college will assign a problem set of, say, 40 problems, and not expect just one student to do it, but to work with others. I'd like to see more of that at the high school. That's just one thing. So, what, as we, as we walk through this essential, essentially a national effort, Common Core was not created for Newburyport, it was created for the United States. As we walk through this national effort, I think it's really important that we specify what's going to work for Newburyport. I think it's really important that we have strong dialogue about how the standards work here. I think it's important that there's a discussion about what is appropriate for the students here. Because I surmise that Common Core goes hand in hand with testing, and that ultimately test results can impact teacher evaluations. So, I would think everybody's going to be really interested in that. I would also think that there are some teachers that feel they provide a very rigorous curriculum. And I think it's important that they have a chance to talk about that, share what works. And again, I know you've talked about best practices, but again, I, I really want to feel like we're doing things specific for Newburyport and the students here. Because one of the things I worry about is policy changes and challenges from those policies should not cause the passion to teach to subside in any teacher. So, I guess that's, and it also should lead to improved student achievement at all levels in our, in our school district. Last spring, at budget time, I asked a question about the costs of supplies and materials to meet Common Core. And I was basically told there was no additional costs. But I've heard tonight a few comments. One was that the budget has been tight, you know, what do you want to ask for? I've also heard a comment about teachers building their own ancillary materials. I guess what I'm saying is, as a, as a school committee, we need to know what people are going to need to really implement this the way it should be implemented. And last year, when I asked the question, it was predicated upon another school district in Massachusetts that added 304,000 for supplies and materials as a result of Common Core. So, I know it's here to stay. I don't have a problem with it. The other reason why I think it's important to have the pieces of discussion is that I don't think we want any of our people in silos dealing with this stuff. I think we want people sharing the effort, sharing what works. I think discussion is really important because what I hear in general is that there can, there should be more. And not, I'm not talking about Newburyport, I'm just talking about as I look into how different states have picked up this and that teachers feel like there should be more discussion about what is appropriate for students. So, I'm not against it. I think it should be, you know, properly resourced. I applaud the efforts to increase collaboration, increase discussion, because I think that's something that, that our students are going to, are going to need to do. But again, I worry, I worry that, again, policy changes and challenges should not cause the teacher's passion to teach to subside, and I don't want us to lose that as a result of this. Thank you.
Mr. Mann.
Sort of following a little bit on what Steve said, I was interested in hearing you talk a little bit more about the tools and materials at the, at the elementary school level and acquiring new or creating new. And I just wanted to hear you talk a little bit about that before I made a comment. So, what does that, what does that mean?
Well, what it means is that there's, the work that teachers have done, the curriculum that teachers have, the program that they've been using at the elementary school from K to five is called investigations. And it's a problem-based, it's a standards-based program, but it was built on the old standards. And it's, it's well-done because it gives kids problems to solve. It also comes with resource kits. So, there are manipulatives and things that, that kids have always used. And so, those resources we have. Those books and program materials we have. But over the last couple of years, when the new Common Core was adopted, those, all of those materials from K to eight became really outdated because of the shift in the Common Core. So, the manipulatives did not change. We can still use those, because those can still be used from grade to grade. But the books and the resources that teachers were using to provide instruction for the students, those have all changed. So, we've, not all, of course, you know, the basic, you know, groundwork is still there. It's just moved from some grades to the other. But it's very difficult for teachers to have to take, and this is where the vertical piece comes in, it takes a long time to meet together, to fill those gaps, to say, okay, well, fractions now are in the first grade. We haven't really used them. We haven't really had to have kids be proficient in finding, you know, the fractional piece of something in the first grade before. So, that means that they have to talk to each other, they have to change resources, they have to support each other. And a lot of the new materials are starting to come out now, which are realigned. So, for instance, the, at the middle level, sixth, seventh, and eighth, they've used Connected Math for the last several years. When CMP 2 came out, the district bought the materials for CMP 2. And now, the CMP 3 materials are out, and we probably should, if we're going to use Connected Math and it's all realigned, we should probably make an investment for the teachers to be able to use those resources. So, will the, will the manipulatives change? No. They'll still be able to trade them from, from grade to grade. Will there be maybe some things we might need? Yeah, maybe, but some of the things we might be able to get from the high school, because they might not need them anymore because they're at the, at the middle school. So, it's, it's hard to say what we needed before, right now, because of all the work that we've done on realigning, and also that the, the new programs were not available. So, people have been doing a lot of really good work to try and figure out, they understand the standards. They dug deep into the standards, but they, a lot of, in a lot of places, they don't have the resources that they need. And they're not going to have them, you know, until, until they're available and until we can afford for them to have them.
I just wanted to add to that. That was a great explanation of that, Liz. Thank you. Because last year, when we said there was no additional cost at this time, it wasn't that there was ever going to be a cost. And I think if, you know, if we recall back to those conversations, it was at this time, we didn't have the need for the resources. We weren't far enough along in this process. I mean, we're further now, as Liz just said, in the alignment to actually be able to identify where our gaps are. One of the summer curriculum projects that was done at grade five was absolutely amazing. For one of the first times since I've been in education, working with math educators, math teachers are actually learning what a math curriculum is, not a math program. And that's always been, we've had good math programs and math teachers have followed a program, not necessarily a curriculum that was based on standards. But because none of the programs had caught up with the standards yet, it really forced math teachers to take a look at the standards and say, what is it we're going to be teaching? Now, what resources do we have to teach that with? Rather than, I'm going to follow what this program tells me to do day by day. So, what Liz is talking about, our programs that we had in place, our core resource is not aligned. But there could be things in third grade that now fit in second grade. So, we had some teachers who spent some time this summer saying, what do we have electronically in our electronic programs, in our math programs, and in our additional resources? How do we pull all of those things together to meet the needs of our curriculum, now that we know what our curriculum is, and where do we have gaps? So, we're at that point now where we're starting to see where we don't have resources. But I had a group of math teachers say to me the other day, I no longer think about math as my book. I think about my curriculum, and I think about the variety of resources I have to teach that curriculum.
Right. I mean, I think that, sort of my comment is that, as you have sort of laid out some of these principles and ideas in the Common Core, they feel very familiar to me. They don't feel familiar to me from my training as a teacher, which was in medieval times. But they're really familiar to me in my training as a Montessori teacher. Because these, these whole, the whole idea of understanding the processes is really fundamental to what Montessori's been doing for 100 years. And I, and I couldn't help but think about all the amazing and remarkable manipulatives that kids are able to use, particularly at the elementary school level, that, that bring them to a place in that way of educating kids where they're, they're a lap in the field in mathematics by the time they hit third grade. They're significantly advanced in a number of areas. And I, and I know from my own personal experience, a lot of that has to do with the way the manipulatives reinforce fundamental ideas and principles that are big-picture principles that, you know, that they can, they can learn something in first grade that suddenly they're applying in third grade by instinct because they got it at this early. And I just wondered how, how much teachers were getting an opportunity to sort of, you know, get outside the box, to look at some of that kind of stuff or create some of those kinds of things that, that, you know, are demonstrably research-based stuff that just really sinks in hard for kids. So, I just was wondering about that. And that's sort of what I was, was getting at, there, you know, that, that we don't have to reinvent the wheel here. That there, in fact, you know, a teacher who understands this stuff is going to be able to develop a lot of things on their own just because it's going to make sense to do it. It's a new way of thinking about it.
Which also makes teaching really fun.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, because you're not starting on page one and going to page 895.
Absolutely.
So, that's part of the fun of it, really.
And I think part of the goal of our data meetings, too, is, is looking at identifying one need for a student, and then saying, what instructional change can I make, and what research is out there that can help advise me in, in making that decision? So, if they were to look at some of those methods and say, let's try this for six weeks and come back and look at our student work again, we'll see if we sign a difference. That's what we're encouraging in those data meetings. And something else, I just, if it's okay, I just wanted to clarify the language on gaps, because we're using that word a lot. But in terms of gaps that we're talking about in curriculum, we really mean the progression of the standards, am I correct? And then in terms of the achievement gap, we mean there in terms of struggling students on their trajectory versus on their trajectory versus grade-level trajectory. That gap does indeed get wider as students get older, so we try to close that early. So, two different terms.
I would think you'd really wanna get on that. You know, I'm not trying to, I, I, I think it's, I mean, I, I guess one of the things, and I have a PowerPoint I'll be glad to send you that was done back in 2006, illustrating how the gaps have widened in, in the United States public schools, and how we're so far behind many industrialized nations in, in even, even our best students. That it's really compelling that you can't let these gaps get unaddressed. And what I worry about is if we're gonna employ this Common Core, which frankly got determined by political politicians, if you will, I think we need to make sure it works for Newburyport, you know? And I think we, we, we go with it, but I think those discussions that you have really need to be set at a point, okay, what are, what do our case students need, what's working? How much of a gap does so-and-so have going from the eighth to the ninth grade, or the third to the fourth in reading, or something? I just think it's really important to address those, and, 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 because otherwise, I think we're, we're missing it, because it's just, it gets wider and it gets faster.
And that's partly why we put our Title I support in our early grades for reading, to, to prevent those.
Sure.
Yeah, as soon as possible. So, that's one place where we prioritize our resources younger.
And, you know, literacy is used in all kind of ways to solve problems, so, you know, it's important. Thank you.
Mayor?
Thank you. Emily, Liz, Angela, I just would like to say thank you. This has probably been one of the best discussions that we have had about curriculum and the future of where we're going, you know, in our, our, our school system. But one of the things that typically happens is that now you'll disappear and we'll ask for you next year. And I think that this is really the heart and soul of where we're going, what's happening. And we need to have ongoing, regular updates. I would absolutely love to see you put out a small brochure. You know, there are obviously open houses, parents come to grade level, they meet with teachers, they learn about, you know, which curriculum they're using and what's happening, particularly related to their child. But I think to understand the full picture, in terms of what you're trying to do, in terms of the vertical alignment, and, you know, how, the impact of literacy and the changes, and how it runs all the way from K through 12 now, I, I mean, I really would like to see a brochure put together on the Common Core, where we are, where we're going. I'd like more detail for us. You know, I don't know if it's a rubric that you put together for every grade, about where we are, what's been done so far, in terms of, just to keep us, you know, on track of where we're going. I mean, our whole goal that we have determined as our highest priority is student achievement. So, how are we going to measure that if we don't know where you are, in terms of the process of, of implementation? So, looking at each of these items around the circle, you know, how do you put that out in a, a rubric and talk about where we are at kindergarten, grade one, you know, this is the, this is the work that's been done, come back every other month? You know, we have, as you said, 14 years, but I, I, I'm sure that we will be making significant advancements before then, but I want ongoing information from you on, on where this is going, so that when it comes time for us to look at budget items, as we begin to look at what you're saying, so that we've been following the trend, we've been following what you're trying to do, what you're trying to implement, and understanding that you've looked at three, four, and five, and we know these manipulatives can move over here, and, you know, we're gonna replace curriculum with the Connect Math III. If we need to do that, we need to know that. We need to know that not at, you know, the week before we have to pass a budget, but we need to know that this becomes our biggest priority. And so, as we step back and we go through, we know that we need to find, you know, an extra $75,000 for our supplies to implement pieces of the core curriculum. And so that, that becomes what everybody is focusing on as they come forward with these budgets, and they don't have these, you know, artificial wish lists that we just cut, 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 cut. But that, you know, does that make sense?
Again, it's about tying it all together, coming back to this is, this is where our focus is, and we expect to, as we continue this work, to identify where our priorities are going to be, which definitely leads right to the budget, so.
School district and school committee priorities.
Yes.
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 Actually coming together.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Emily.
So, we'll see you in November or early December.
We gotta talk about science.
You'll be coming back. Yes. Yes.
Sure, we can leave them in case we want to look at them. Thank you, Emily and Liz.
Yeah, that was another 20 minutes.
Always has to be. It has to be.
I know, 20 minutes.
And I'm gonna, given the importance of that last presentation, I, I'm gonna ask if there is anybody in the audience that would like to make a public comment about that? Any, any information you, any kind of questions you have lingering? Were you comfortable with the presentation, the way it, it, it came out? I'm asking for a, for any public comment.
Can we ask questions?
Um, you can, yes.
I have a question.
I don't know if we can answer them, but.
We can get the answers, yeah.
What's that?
We can get the answers for you, so ask away.
Not knowing a whole lot about Common Core, but my understanding is it's federally mandated. Is that correct? So, we're obligated to get federal funding to do it. Has there been any proven record on it? Has there been drastically increased test scores in other places? Kind of where's the proof in the pudding?
We, we can look into that. That will be for their follow-up conversation. We'll focus on, you know, the proof. What do we know so far in terms of success with the shift for Common Core?
Because I would think at this point, we know more of that if we're just going full-force adopting it, rather than, well, we kinda have to do it to get the federal funding, and we're just going light and speed ahead. Because I, I do hear mixed things about it, that is it really best for the kids? Is it really best for the school district, or is it just because it's federally mandated?
Thank you.
Mary Foley? Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Gail? Can you state your name and address for, poor Mrs. Kennedy? Sorry. We've heard about how it would help the kids on IEP, and about the gap to the grade level. What about the gap to the kids that are above grade level?
Good question.
Because you're still losing 20-plus percent of the kids that are above grade level, that now you're bringing it down to the Common Core, and the teacher has to teach to that Common Core, and you're not teaching where the kid is, per se.
I didn't really hear that, but that's okay.
I think it gives actually a lot more flexibility to teachers when they're not using these programs, where they go from page one to page, and it doesn't matter if your kid's on page 80 and we're on page five. You know, so it seems like there's a lot more flexibility, but we'll work on that issue in the, in the next follow-up meeting. So, thank you, Gail.
Yeah. Thank you. Next on our agenda is the superintendent's report. You're supposed to have eight minutes.
I wanted to come back, 'cause there had been some questions earlier regarding special education and out-of-district placements, and I just wanted to put some parameters around that. As you know, Dr. D came and presented to you earlier, and is going to continue to present to you throughout the year, and keep you updated on the, the progress that we have. But I, I just wanna put, put some specifics to our out-of-district placements. Currently, we have 26 students who attend 13 different outside placements, and this is a very.
Do you wanna pass that out?
Uh, no, because the grade line.
All right, okay. Okay, fine.
Because I wanted to take that off.
Right, I'm sorry.
And understandably, these are students who have needs that either we have not been able to meet in the district, and they require an individual placement for the particular disability or disabilities that they may have, and/or some of these cases may have been resolved through litigation. As you know, there is a very strict process that is followed for IEP development. Parents can reject that, they can go to mediation, we, they can go to a full-blown hearing there. And as I have identified for you, and wanna just repeat again, if in fact, we end up going to hearing and we do not, the school district does not prevail, and parents prevail in that hearing, then the district is on, is obligated to pay the attorney's fees for the parents. So, it's very difficult to, to be able to judge the cost of any type of litigation. But what I wanted to also talk about was just the expense we're obligated to provide transportation to, and currently, we're spending about $280,000 in transportation to these placements. And our tuition, which includes, in some cases, summer programming, because the students require programming beyond the typical school year, otherwise, they would regress. And there's a formula, there's, there's a, a process to go through to determine which students require that. Not all of our students that are in out-of-district placements require summer programming, but some do. And that is to the tune of $1,780,000. And I know that there have been a lot of questions around that. So, just about $2 million represents the special education costs. It is one of the reasons why we are currently looking at and assessing the programs we have in district right now, and really looking at how to strengthen those programs where we need to, and looking at what the organization of those programs, what the organization is of those programs. As you know, Dr. D has been doing this work, I think she gave you a very thorough presentation of the work that she's done up to this point. Because I also have a significant background in special education, she and I have been having lots of conversations around all of this. But this is just one, one aspect. As I've, I, I think I've said to all of you during the interview process, I understand that we will always have some children who will be outside of the district. My personal preference is always to have kids in the district, and that's because I think that, that once we get the right programs in place, there are kids. And I, I generally think that we, we can and should be doing a better job of educating them than having them go to an outside program. But you're always going to have some situations where, for example, we could have a student move into the district tomorrow, who is coming from another town, who is in and out of district placement already, and we are now on the hook for that, to continue that program. So, there are, there, this is an area where I think all superintendents wish they had a crystal ball, because it's very hard to predict this area, particularly when it comes to budget. And I, I just, I wanna, I wanna keep these particular items on the school committee's radar screen, and keep you updated on where we are in this, because it, this does have such a, a big impact on our budget. Any questions?
Yeah, I, I agree that it does have a, a significant impact, and I also, you know, strongly believe that we have a, a legal and a moral obligation.
Yes, we do.
To serve these kids. But just, just from doing some back-of-the-envelope sort of calculations here, 26 students would, is, is, what, a little bit, little bit more than 1% of our total student population here. I don't know if it's, I don't know if it reflects about 10% of our, our special needs populations, but that slightly more than 1% of the students are really taking up, are using about 10% of our overall budget for, for the year. And that speaks to how, how involved some of these supportive programs are, and I think it's, it's important, but I also do think it's ambitious for us to be able to think we're gonna be, you know, able to serve all of those kids in our programs. But we certainly, I think, are going to be able to serve more of those kids. But it, it is, you know, and, and, and I sort of bring that up, just to say, let's keep going in this direction. And not so much to sort of single out special needs kids as being budget busters, I'm, I, obviously, I'm not doing that, and I'm not saying that. What I am saying is that I think that we need to be real creative, I think we need to move in this direction, because I think that we can do this. But it is, it is significant, we're not talking about small change here, it's a very significant impact on us.
Mr. Decanter?
I would add to that, that to me, it underlines our responsibility as a community to keep on our legislators' rear end, day in and day out, to make sure that special education circuit breakers are fully funded. Which, they're not. A, the, the formula isn't great to begin with.
Right.
But in addition to that, they're not fully funded. And that is an abomination. That's shame on the whole state. And we need to make sure that we, we continue to raise that flag and make that noise.
You know, I, I would agree that I, we certainly have an ethical and a moral obligation to provide programming for any student who comes into the Newburyport Public Schools. And, but it is, it is my hope that as we move forward, and as we identify, and, and make changes to some of our in-district programs, that we can build back that relationship that we had at one time with parents, that I think where some trust has been lost. And I, that's where, that's the direction that I think that, that's where our focus is. And continuing to meet with parent groups, continuing to meet with individual parents when they, when they request it, listening to what the concerns are, and really trying to address them in a, in a very proactive and very positive way.
Mr. Cool?
Yeah, I think by moving the way that you are, in terms of looking at the special ed programs, and ensuring that they're appropriate and well-organized, in addition to what Mr. Decanter says, according, you know, making sure that we advocate for full circuit breaker funding, along with finding programs to help return kids to our school district, because if we become adept at, at those transitions, I think that's gonna help return the student to our school district, and bring them back to the least restrictive environment, which is, I think, what we all want.
Mr. Keon?
Yeah, I, I like the direction you're going in, and I would echo what Susan has mentioned already, as well as my other colleagues, and, and not forget to really include these families of these special needs students in the building of these programs, so, so that only further enhances their confidence that maybe they, they, has, has been shaken recently. But the acknowledgement of the difficulty in being not only a special needs student, but a special needs parent as well, they, they, they need and deserve the, to be involved in this process.
Okay. I'm gonna, the next agenda item, I'm gonna turn it over to Mayor Holliday.
Thank you, Susan. We ask that the school committee join us for a special forum on November 4th, as opposed to hosting a school committee here. It has been raised several weeks ago, phone calls started coming to my office about families finding needles in our playgrounds, and raised immediate concerns. Three young adults were found coughing heroin on the rail trail and arrested just before, two out of the three just shot up. Consequently, we met with about 35 families at the Emma Andrews Library two weeks ago, and talked about what we can do around the park in terms of surveillance, increased patrols, working on a neighborhood watch, beginning to put cameras or some type of light sensors on the park, and really work with them around what the needs are there. In addition, I asked Frank Cousins to send his gentleman from Middleton here last week, who did a sweep of all of our parks, to ensure that there were no needles in, in our parks. I mean, it's just horrific that we're at this point. What my understanding is, is that these are, the main range we're talking about are kids between 20 and 30, who've been addicted to OxyContin or other drugs that cost 80 bucks a pill, they can't afford it as they reach levels of their addiction, and so they end up shifting to heroin, which is cheaper. Easily access to needles, and they're just disposing them around our community. Totally unacceptable, really, really concerned about. Really, really concerned about this. So, we, I have asked, I've spoken to DA Blodgett to ask what's happening on a regional level. You'll notice in paper recently, this morning, they were talking about heroin busts, working with other police force in the area. But I think it's important that we come together as a community to have a dialogue about this. You know, we'll be posting, if it's not on the website tonight, it'll be on the website tomorrow and it will be on the website, the police website. What do you do if you come across a needle? We've heard that some people have wrapped them up in a paper bag and just threw it in the trash. Puts our city workers at risk. So, there is a place to dispose of needles in City Hall. So, we're going to put information out there on what you do if you come across it. What do you say to a young child? What do you tell your young child if they are over at Perkins and they happen to come across a needle? So, these are the kinds of conversations. Also, what are we doing in terms of our drug-free community grant with our youth services? You know, Andy Egmont will be there. We're going to be talking about identification, prevention, as well as intervention. And I think this is a really important dialogue for our community. 7:00 at City Hall on November 4th, and I would encourage all of you to be there.
Thank you.
Okay. I wanted to just bring you up to speed a little bit on, as you know, we will be combining Brown and Bresnahan, and I wanted to bring you up on two points along that. Working with Andy Egmont and all three of the administrators in those buildings. We have put together a two-year plan that will go into next year, as well as this year, for ways in which to bring both of the staffs in those buildings together through a variety of different activities. And you will be hearing more about that directly from the principals at a later date. But I wanted you to be aware that that is a two-year process, because we want it to continue right into the new building, when people are in the new building. We also are looking at, as I have been tasked with, looking at the administrative models and what that would look like. And I have been meeting, just to bring you up to speed, we're not ready to present yet, but we have been meeting weekly with both principals and the assistant principal with me in discussing potential models. We're looking at three different models right now and are tweaking all of those and are coming up with one that will be a final recommendation that we will take to the school committee for how that building, what's the best way to administratively organize that building. But it will be later this fall when we will be reporting to you, because we need more, we have more work to do before I'm ready to report. Three models and we may, you know, we could have one that actually morphs into something else. So, that's the update on that. And then the last thing that I wanted to make you aware of is that we have, there has been a change to the bullying policy and there is additional language that we need to include.
Twice already.
And I'm going to bet that these will be tweaked again and again. What I am giving you is I'm giving you a model plan that Desi has put out. All of the information that is in here that's new is highlighted for you. And it has to do really with the, this has nothing, there's no change to students. This is really about the adults and the language that we have to put in here. But I wanted to make you aware that along with these two documents, which I know you have seen before, which is the Bullying Prevention and Intervention Plan, as well as the policy on bullying, that we need to look at all three documents and look at how this language may need to be incorporated into these documents as well. So, this is not a quick fix by any means. We're really going to have to examine it and see just where it's appropriate to insert that additional language.
Is this mandated?
Yes.
From the state?
This is, this was a change in the law.
Okay. I didn't, okay.
And it's really about when bullying, if bullying were to occur by any school staff, personnel, to a child. That's what it's about. And so, we have to address this. We have to educate the staff on this. And of course, this went into effect July 1st. So, this will be an ongoing process in terms of educating staff and then making changes to the policies and procedures that we have in place already. But I wanted, and I wanted you to just be aware of that.
Do we need to move to adopt this language, the specific changes?
Yes, because it's in state law. So, yes.
I move that we adopt the language that the state has encouraged us to adopt.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. McCarthy.
Thank you. Is it that they've encouraged us or they're mandating it?
Well, I was being diplomatic by saying encourage.
Right, but why? But I go back to, why do we have to vote to adopt this?
That's a good question.
It's mandated.
Change of district policy.
I think that they want, knowing that it's mandated, if we were to vote for it, my guess is that it would be, it would indicate to the state that we are aware the changes have happened and have, are informed about them and are informed enough to vote for them, I would assume. You know, as opposed to just saying, yeah, it's the law, so let's just, that would be my guess.
Funny. And adopting something that's mandated and, oh, whatever.
But what part of this are we mandating? Is this going to supersede our current plan? Or is it going to be, I'm sorry, you know what I'm saying?
What I would like to do is I would like to weave the language that's in here into these other two documents.
Right, that's, I think, what, it's the new language, the new principles that they've added to the bullying policy to make it more comprehensive, that by approving that language, we're having the superintendent take this and, I mean, I think that's what we're doing.
Should we maybe table it until, I mean, that we can read it? Or do we think we can get through this pretty quick?
We can do that.
I could probably.
Can we, may I offer an amendment, Bruce, to your motion? That we move to approve the integration of the new language into our policy statements.
We don't really have a choice. Yeah, I'm certainly willing to entertain that.
Motion to receive.
Well, that's true, too.
The motion to receive and file doesn't take the action step of incorporating it into our own.
But it's mandated to incorporate it.
Well, if I can just sort of reframe what you said, it was mandated on July 1st and this is October 8th.
I mean, whatever, I'm not, I just.
This wasn't released until September.
Correct.
This was mandated in July.
Policy released in September.
Retro policy, yes.
I mean, obviously.
I have a discussion with the department in the spring. This was never even discussed.
Right, right. That's why I was not chuggling, but we did our plan three times already. So, I guess I'm, Bruce, I don't know where to go with this. I guess, I don't know which supersedes the other, or I guess I don't know the correlation among the three documents yet. So, I, and I don't know if we have a choice.
I mean, it seems to me that essentially, whether we adopt this language, there is now a language that needs to be part of our bullying plan and we are instructing the superintendent to identify that language and insert it and then present it back to us so that we can formally approve it. We're not going to formally disapprove of it. But, so however we want to reframe that, that's essentially, we're giving the superintendent.
It's also, it's been, they've changed, the other thing that they've done is they, you'll see in here, please note that in the model plan and in other department publications, we use the word target instead of victim and aggressor instead of perpetrator. So, again, they have made some, their own updates since originally what they, what was developed. So, there are a number of considerations that we have to pay attention to.
It's really all described in the footnote.
Correct.
And the footnote is essentially, you know, supports the title, Model Bullying Prevention and Intervention Plan One. So, it's really, the footnote kind of explains everything how, of what's been amended.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to be difficult. I'm just, I just find it funny when we are mandated to do something and we vote to approve doing it. That being said, I mean, we spent how long coming up with the policy? We submit it to the state, it's returned to us, we submit it again, and now they're going to write it for us. But what, you know, whatever. I, I.
I think from.
Receive, if we want to vote to approve it, that's fine. I just.
I think from reading this, this is really a focus on adults working in schools. And it sounds like there's a loop getting closed. To make sure, you know, we can do all the things we want or we think are important with respect to children, but the loop needs to get closed on adults.
You know, if you're looking for symmetry, we can send this back to the state, the same way that they sent this back to us. But.
So, whatever. All right, how do we want to proceed, Mayor?
I would just like to ask that, this is an opportunity, since we're sort of reopening three documents, that we take a close look at. I mean, one of the things that I have consistently heard from people is texting, there's now a new anonymous website that kids are using that is just horrific. And, you know. We've got, we've got to, as a school committee, we've got to embrace this. And I, we'll come back to this definition, it is too narrow. And that's in the state guidelines. And we've seen teachers and principals before us talking about data that is just, oh, no, we don't have a problem, it's just we've had this little and we haven't had any. I mean, it's happening everywhere. It's happening everywhere. And whether kids are reporting it or not, and so we have got to make, I think, our policies really work. They have to be updated. We should be including information to parents about these websites or, this just concerns me greatly, because the impact that this is having on kids when they have been targeted through texting and Facebook and other things, or this new website now, it just, it concerns me greatly. And I don't think that we're doing enough.
Is cyberbullying included in this? Since we just got this right now, I didn't.
Since it is mandated and only adopted a month ago, we're now a month later, can we receive and study and take it up next meeting? If we have a chance to go through the documents, see what's in there?
And give us those two other policies, too, so we can integrate them?
See what we think is missing.
Send these out electronically.
Have a discussion about it.
Okay.
So, I guess I withdraw my.
I withdraw.
Accept it.
And will you send these all out electronically to us, Susan? Thank you.
And you're, are you, what is your plan to integrate these three? Do you have a team working on that?
I don't yet, but I need to talk with Angela about that. I told her we needed to decide.
I just, I just didn't know what you would do on your side. For us, it's information, not so much the melding.
We introduced it to the prevention specialists at the meeting last week.
Okay.
And we gave them all the documents and asked them to start reviewing and thinking about integration. So, we've just started the conversation.
Tell them to look at the definition, look at information for parents, too. Should there be like some kind of newsletter update that goes out? It just has to be more than just a policy that sits in a book somewhere.
Yes.
It just concerns me.
Good. So, if you start that and then you sent that.
And then they could come back when they're ready.
Yeah.
We could have an open conversation with the community about bullying.
Yes.
Nick made a motion to move to table. Do we need a second and a vote on that?
Yes. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you for keeping us honest, Mrs. Kennedy.
Better known than the collect me.
I know. We will not be having a executive session this evening.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
We didn't do any subcommittee reports. We haven't actually, we need to go back to this two or three, or how many new committees did we develop?
Well, we have.
We have to, we have to really look at subcommittees.
I think we have to talk about subcommittee, yeah. Do you have another copy of this, Nick or Susan?
Yes, I do.
Friends and folks, maybe you can send this out, Nick. I know it doesn't have dates on it, but we asked, I asked Nick topics for public conversation. These are some topics. I don't know where they got generated from. I'm sorry, I shouldn't be talking after the meeting, but I just wanted you to have these. Oh, all right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, everyone.
Angela, did you mind down any of Gail's questions? Could you get back to me and I'll get back to them, or you could get back to them? Or, because I think they are important, you know, where else have we, has there been success?